Good evening and welcome to the January 12th meeting of the Three Village Board of Education. Happy New Year. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion that we move into executive session in order to discuss the employment history of a particular person and negotiations. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 12th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. Please welcome our Superintendent, Mrs. Pedicich, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. There are no changes in the meeting agenda. Number three, students and staff recognition. A, music student selection to the Honors Performance Series at Carnegie Hall.
Definitely our most favorite part of the meeting, and tonight, we have a very special young woman. I would first like to introduce our Director of Music, Mr. Anthony Palera.
It is my honor and privilege to congratulate Akadia Conkle on her acceptance into the Honors Performance Series at Carnegie Hall. Akadia will play violin in one of five honors ensembles, which are limited to the highest-rated high school students from across the world. Five hundred finalists from forty-seven states and five countries were selected for this amazing opportunity out of ten thousand applicants. The students will come together for five days of rehearsals in February, culminating with a concert at Carnegie Hall on February 5th. I would also like to recognize the dedicated music teachers from Three Village, who have taught, supported, and mentored her as a musician, and a very special thank you to our Superintendent, Cabinet, and Board of Education for their incredible unwavering support of our music program. And I think Akadia is going to treat us with a short little ditty. You can hear how good she is.
Hi, I'm Akadia Conkle, and I will be performing a short excerpt from "Preludium in a Logro" by Chrysler. Thank you.
Akadia, that was amazing. Thank you.
Akadia, what grade are you in?
Tenth grade.
Tenth grade. Unbelievable.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Wonderful. Number four, reports. Student representative report. Riley Meckley.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Since my last report, Ward Melville has had a lot of school activities. The day before winter break, the Physical Education Department hosted the annual junior versus senior volleyball tournament. I think it was extra special this year because we couldn't do it last year, and now the tradition has been revived again. Upperclassmen got to watch their peers compete in the final volleyball game. The whole month prior to this event, gym classes assembled teams and competed with other classes. There were also a musical chair competition, trivia questions, and a holiday spirit vote for the most spirited. Also before break, Ward Melville had two winter concerts. The music students were happy to be performing in front of a live audience. It was the first in-person concert again since December 2019. I went to see the concerts, and I was amazed by the musical talent my peers possess. We had a school-wide holiday spirit week the week before break, and it was really cool to see everyone in holiday attire. I remember seeing people walk the halls in a Santa costume, Buddy the Elf, The Grinch, and other characters as well. Some club updates. The varsity mock trial team is in the beginning of their season. They have recently gotten their case and are preparing to compete against other schools, fulfilling their roles of lawyers and witnesses. The Women's Forum Club has been meeting with a group of sixth-grade girls at Arrowhead Elementary School every Monday. The high schoolers have been planning different lessons and topics to discuss with the younger students and help prepare them for the journey of junior high. Student government has had a town hall meeting with Mr. Bernhard. Prior to the meeting, students were able to submit questions about the school. Mr. Bernhard answered all the concerns, and the topics ranged from bathroom issues, cafeteria concerns, and more. Art Honor Society is working on illustrating and writing picture books that promote diversity. They plan to share these books with the elementary schools. Unfortunately, many student athletes are very upset at the new spectator limit just recently imposed. There was great support in December, and we would like to urge the district and the athletic department to reconsider this rule for the rest of the season and for spring sports. This December, our Science Olympiad team placed second in the Bird Science Olympiad Tournament, with over one hundred teams entered. And while on the science note, Ward Melville has had two students, Billy Zhang and Amber Liu, make it to the semifinals for the Regeneron Science Competition. They participate in this competition through our school's InStar program, and this is an incredible accomplishment, as it is the nation's oldest and most prestigious science program. Congrats to them. As for the seniors in Ward Melville, a lot of us are quite surprised that we have entered 2022, our graduating year. Many people have gotten acceptances from colleges and are in the process of deciding. Lastly, thank you for giving our district a traditional snow day. I think everyone can agree that it was awesome to enjoy the day and not have to worry about classes. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley, for that wonderful presentation. You always do such a great job. So with regard to the spectator limitation, that is only for the month of January, and that is because of the surge that we've experienced. That will be reevaluated for the month of February.
Okay, thank you. I'll be sure to let the captains of the sports know.
You're welcome.
Okay, number five, items for board discussion. Just to reiterate, there was a messenger call put out by our superintendent on January 4th in reference to the community forum, and that has been open since, and it will close on January 17th, and the forum will take place on January 26th. Anybody is welcome to go to Ward Melville High School to watch that in person. There will be no question-and-answer session. All the questions are put in advance, as you can see on the website, under the directions and instructions. And I believe it starts at?
It starts at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. But it also will be livestreamed, so you can watch it from there as well. And last night was the first budget meeting?
Yes.
Budget committee meeting with the twelve residents? How'd that go?
It went very well. There's a lot of information the members of the committee will be looking for. What we covered was what we felt would be topics that would be of most use to cover over the course of the next few months. It seemed to go pretty well. I think it's going to be a useful committee. And as Mrs. Pedicich and I were both there last night, it was quite a bit of information they're looking for, and we started putting that together today, and we'll get that out to them. And yeah, I think it's going to work well for us.
In addition, we will be posting our minutes as well as our agenda to the district website so that the community will be able to see that and follow along.
Fantastic. I'm very happy to hear. I'm sure the board is. That's off to a great start. Number six, items for board action. A, approval of contract with outside service provider for special educational tutoring services. Jeff?
This is for services as required by an IEP.
Can I have a motion, please? That's a first and a second. You got it, Inger? Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. B, approval of health and welfare services contract. Jeff?
This is for a Three Village resident student who attends a private school in the Uniondale School District, and this is to cover the cost for health and welfare services. We do this with Three Village residents who attend private schools located in other districts, and we do the opposite way for non-Three Village residents that attend private schools located here. We build those districts same way.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We're going to move letter C and D together. Transportation services and mini-bus transportation services. Jeff?
This is the bus extension, one-year extension of our contracts for both big bus and mini-bus services with Suffolk Transportation. The contracts can be extended one year at a time, as long as both sides agree, of course. And the percentage increase is determined by the State Education Department. There's a special consumer price index that they look at for transportation contracts. The actual percentage increase will be determined by the State Education Department probably in May, maybe even June, but it will be at whatever that increase is, percentage increase is for this.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Letter E, acceptance of donations. Jeff?
We have two donations. One is a vibra harp donated by Mr. Philip Angeline, and the other is a check for $2,005 from the Stalket PTA to fund two arts and education programs.
Very nice. Can I have a motion? Second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Letter F, declaration of surplus equipment.
We have two cellos from the Mount Elementary School that are in beyond repair condition.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We're going to move G through L, but we're going to have an explanation by Jeff Carlson. Claims auditor report, July through October 2021. Do you want me to read them all, or then you just?
So I could just go over each of them.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So we had an audit committee meeting last week, and at the audit committee meeting, we reviewed the financial reports for the months July, August, September, and October in our usual monthly reports. Claims auditor report goes over all of our disbursements. It's an independent CPA firm that reviews every one of our disbursements. They do a monthly report to the board. The district treasurer's report is just our cash position, our cash inflow and outflow. The financial reports are the budget status reports for each of the months, budget line items, expenditure expended, encumbered, et cetera. Extra claims through activities, treasurer reports, that's our clubs, what we here refer to as the allied funds. That's those. And if anybody were to look, you would see any month, some school districts have more activity, some have less. I mean, it kind of mostly evens out. Elementary schools tend to, by the end of the school year, will be pretty similar. The two junior high schools tend to be pretty similar at the end of the year. If you look at any point in time, some may have more activities than others.
So there'll never be an even number?
There'll never, exactly. They have different clubs that operate at different activity levels. Some clubs are more active in some schools than others. It's just always that way. It's not always this school does more than that school. It varies depending on the interest level in all the different clubs. The transfer of funds under 10,000, that's our budget transfers, and then we do separate over 10,000, those go to the audit committee before they're approved. Also, while I'm speaking about the audit committee, one thing that we also went over a little bit was we had recently finished our state comptroller's audit. At least every five years, the comptroller's office does an audit in every school district in the state, and it was our turn. The audit itself lasted for more than two years. They began on October 1st, 2019, and they had a team of auditors working more than two years going over everything. Throughout COVID, you know, as well as all you know, our administration offices were open every single day throughout COVID. They were working through that. I'm happy to say that there was not a single instance that they found of any improper payments, inaccurate payments. As you probably, you know, most people have read in the papers over the last however many years, a lot of those audits, they're very critical of excess fund balance and reserves. That was not an issue. The only issues they had, and I guess part of it is they can't have a team of auditors spend two years here and not come up with anything, have to do with process and improving some processes within the office. Most of them have already put in place. We have some disagreements on stuff, as they even said at the exit conference. We're not saying you have to do these things. These are just recommendations. So I just want to review quickly the recommendations. One is doing online banking policy, which will prepare in accordance with, you know, school board, New York State School Board's recommendation for policies, and we'll bring that to the board's policy committee to review. The financial software policy, we had put in a new financial and HR software program a few years ago, and there was a lot of, in learning the program, we moved from the IT department to the business office, assigning permissions. That's now since come back, and that's when they did the audit period, that was part of that time. So that's in the report, but that's back in IT now. Access rights from individuals that do not need the rights to perform their duties, that's within the system. That we've always done. This is where there is some disagreement, and you'll see when I talk about the next one about segregation of duties. Some of it has to do with, well, in a perfect world, sure, we might have ten more people working in the business office, and everyone can have all, and you have nothing to do with that, and I want to, but that's, we can't operate that way. We have people doing multiple roles, and sometimes somebody in that department needs access for various reasons. So, but if somebody doesn't need access, they don't have it. And there's also different levels of access. There's view information, and there's change information. So there's two different things. To segregate the treasurer's duties or provide greater oversight by establishing mitigating controls, we do that already. We have a number of people involved. Just to remind you also, we have the external auditor, it's an independent CPA firm. We have the internal auditor, independent CPA firm, and we have the claims auditor, another independent CPA firm. Part of what their recommendations were going to be, this past year, the board agreed to hire a senior accountant that works in the business office, who is a CPA, an experienced school district auditor. And Ms. Pedicich and I both told her, you see something that should be, you're an auditor, you see something that needs to be changed. It doesn't matter who needs to make a change, you have the full authority to say, you need to change that, because we want to, you know, adhere to any, you know, make sure everyone is doing whatever they need to do to improve our internal controls. Our monthly bank reconciliations, the comptroller's auditor, I was going to say, had difficulty understanding some of the bank recs, so they said, well, we need to ensure that they're reviewed. They're always reviewed. They're reviewed internally, and our auditors review them also. All interbank wire transfers receive approval before being executed. We do that. All claims are presented to the claims auditor in a approval prior to payment. When we began wiring our monthly health insurance payment, when we first started that, we didn't have the process in place that it would go to the claims auditor first. It does now. That's what that is. And there was a disagreement that we had with them. We used to use a different CPA firm for our external audit. That changed, we had done an RFP way back, got them. That firm changed. It was taken over by a different firm, and it was a whole different team. At the time, we asked the, we happened to be going through our last comptroller's auditor audit, and we asked the auditor at the time, since it's a different firm and a different team, do we have to do an RFP? His opinion was no. The auditors now say, well, yes, he should have done one. So anyway, so we did one two years ago, and we're good to go on that. So the order itself, we'll post to the district's website. We'll put together the corrective action plan, bring that to the board, and we'll post that to the website as well.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move Board of Education, letters G through L. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Letter M, revisions to 2021, 2022 appointments of impartial hearing officers?
Yes, we have an addition and a subtraction off the impartial hearing officers list.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Questions? All in favor? Abstentions? Opposed? Motion passes. Letter N, education law 913 examination of employee named in confidential Schedule A. Can I have, yeah, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. You got that? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Letter O, personnel matters instructional. Gary?
Yes. So we have several important instructional things going on, and first and foremost, the retirements are starting to come in. So I am sad to report that the retirement of longtime librarian Betsy Knox, who started here in 1987, and longtime social studies teacher Lisa Bischoff, started here in 1999, have put in their retirement. In addition, we have several other appointments, including replacement guidance counselor, replacement nurse, four athletic coaches, additional athletic supervision, SAT supervision and instruction, different chaperoning for NISM and wrestling tournaments, Science Olympiad, as well as before and after-school academic intervention services.
Thank you very much. Can I please have a motion? Second. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Letter P, personnel matters, non-instructional. Gary?
Yes. So we have several non-instructional things going on. We have the resignation of two SAC and two SEA members. We have several replacements, including four SEAs and one monitor, two SAC workers. We have a change of status for one of our clerical people, moving from senior office assistant to principal office assistant, and two monitors moving from lunch monitors to SEAs, as well as hiring six additional SEA subs.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please? Second. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number seven, consent agenda. Letter A, minutes of December 15th, 2021. Can I have a motion? Second. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. B, minutes of January 3rd?
The consent agenda is all together.
Okay, good. Then I'll have to go through A through D?
No.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, so that concludes our business portion of our first meeting in 2022. I'd like to turn it over to Sue. She's got a couple of things she'd like to talk about.
Good evening, everybody. We just wanted to take a moment to share some good news from around the district. This is by no means an all-inclusive list, but just some nice items to share with you. So our congratulations to Frances Howe, Victoria Latchko, Jason Liu, and Alexandra Singer, who were named Long Island Young Scholars of Mathematics by the Institute of Creative Problem Solving for the gifted and talented students at SUNY Old Westbury. We're proud to share the news that Jelena's English teacher Doug Elliott, who was named a 2020 distinguished teacher by the Harvard Club of Long Island, has recently been named a Harvard Fellow. And a great story from Ward Melville English teacher Terry Etheridge. She let us know that one of her Princeton-bound seniors, Amy Liu, just got a wonderful surprise in the mail. Jhumpa Lahiri, the acclaimed author of The Namesake and Interpreter of Maladies, recently noticed Amy's creative writing, and she found it so strong and impressive that she sent Amy a beautiful letter. So congratulations to all of you.
Fantastic. Excellent. Very nice to hear. Okay, I just have a statement I'm going to read, and then we're going to open it up to public participation. A question has arisen whether the district is obligated to comply with the Department of Health face-covering regulation. In that regard, on January 6th, 2022, Commissioner of Education Betty A. Rosa issued a statement advising all school districts in the state that under the face-covering regulations issued by the Department of Health, counties are required to enforce school masking regulations. Further, the commissioner stated counties do not have the legal authority to require boards of education to vote on specific issues. School officers take an oath to obey all legal requirements. The State Education Department expects school boards will follow all legal requirements, including the face-covering regulation. Based upon the guidance of the Commissioner of Education, the Three Village Central School District will continue to comply with the requirements issued by the New York State Department of Health and the Suffolk County Department of Health. Just to clear up any questions wanting to make that statement. So now we're going to turn it over to public participation. Okay. So I don't think I have to read the whole statement. You have three minutes, Inger. Our district clerk is in charge. You're going to go up to the microphone, and the first person up we have is Adam DeMell. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Adam DeMell. I'm a resident of the district. For the last two months, you guys have been telling us you're not medical experts. You can't make medical decisions, you're educators, and you leave it up to the medical professionals. We get a letter home from the superintendent talking about a conference call they had with- with the tyrant Hockel of New York State, saying that we're not going to do tests to stay because the COVID numbers are down due to universal masking and distancing. So I guess my only question is, what data are you guys using? I mean, you tell us that you have to follow all these, you just read a statement that we have to follow these laws. These aren't laws. These are mandates that are passed by unelected officials. I don't know how many times I have to come here and ask about it, but you're following stuff that's not legal. These aren't laws. These are stuff that's, they're suggestions, and these unelected politicians are telling you to follow it. I just want to know, what data do you guys have that thinks, that makes it okay for kids in the high school to eat their lunch on the floor because they're too scared to eat in the cafeteria because they want to sit with their friends, and if they move those desks, they get yelled at? What data are you guys using that says it's okay for parents to get letters home, letters home from their teachers in elementary schools, saying, make sure your kids bundle up because we're going to be opening the windows and we're going outside in sub-freezing temperatures? If any of you guys know anything about cold weather survival, if you bundle up in the classroom when you go outside, all the stuff you're wearing doesn't work. You're now cold. You can't get warm. I want to know what data you guys are using that says it's okay for the children in elementary when their snack time comes to, again, go outside in the hallway and eat on the floor, the dirty disgusting floor? Where do you think they put their masks? They probably rest them on the floor. I'm not coming here saying, oh, get rid of the mask mandate. You guys made it perfectly clear that you're going to follow that. And you know what? Thank you. Thank you for coming out and making that statement, finally. But I just want to know, what data are you guys using that says all this is okay? You have kids on the floor like it's a third-world country eating their lunch. That's ridiculous. We live in Suffolk County. I paid so much in taxes. I'm here, I go to this school district, I went to this school district, and you're treating these kids like they're just disgusting human beings. You guys are going to be on the wrong side of this. You know that. When it all comes said and done, and they, and people look back, they're going to realize that you guys handled this incorrectly, and you ruined all these kids. And you look around now, nobody even comes to these meetings. They don't think you guys are a serious body anymore. They don't. And I sit here, and my people are telling me, you're crazy for going. Why are you wasting your time? Why are you taking off of work? Because I'm not giving up on the district. I'm going to keep fighting for my kids and the kids that are here, and the parents who can't make these meetings. You have your committee meeting on the 26th where you guys get to sit there and answer already questions that you already know that you're going to have, and you can prepare the answers. I'm here right now asking for answers. Why can't you ever answer people when they come to the board meeting for the public participation? Just come out and help the parents. And now you're barring us from schools. And you know what? My seven seconds is up, and, you know, I got nothing else to say.
So Chris Mistecchi, could you please answer the question on why there's no back-and-forth communication at a board meeting, at a community forum, or a different type of forum? We can do that, but at a board meeting? And the non, the visitors being shut down, you are correct, and that's for the month of January only. That is not forward, and that's to keep our staff and our students safe. It's not for, you know, hatred of parents. So that's that reason. So Chris, could you explain?
Sure. Now, the board has a strict policy with regard to public participation at board meetings, and at those meetings, the board is not required legally to answer those questions from the public, and that's their policy. However, there is a policy where you could specifically submit questions to administration, and administration will provide responses to those questions. But this is not the form for them, not under their policy.
But they could. It's their policy. Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and, I'll break that policy, as I have done many times in the past. And just to specify, that part of the, and I'm a strong believer in the open meetings law, I'm sure often to the annoyance of some, but it's important to remember that it's, that this meeting is not a public meeting in terms of a meeting that's what you're envisioning with given, with that kind of give and take. Where the requirement is that we hold our meeting in public, so that you can watch us engage in the process of deliberation. And as far as the other questions, I think if you just send them in, you should be able to get answers to those questions.
But I want to look at you guys in the face, and I want you to answer the question. I don't want you guys to be able to prepare it and type it up. I'm not going to keep engaging because you guys don't want to. I get it. I'll talk to you afterwards if you want to. I got no problem with that.
And I just want to provide a point of clarification with regard to tests to stay. The reason the district, in my letter, that we are not doing tests to stay is because we have a limited and unsustainable number of tests in order to do tests to stay. In order to do tests to stay, you must test a student over a seven-day period three times. We would not be able to do that, and that was stated in my letter.
Thank you. Next up is Maria Covato. Good evening, Maria.
My name is Maria Covato. I am resident of this district. The Constitution clearly states it is the ultimate power of the people, which allows them to consent or not to the actions of the servant government. The government is composed of elected officials. The board are also elected officials, and therefore, they fall under the servant to the people. A regulation from 2019 was reinstated permitting a school nurse to vaccinate students without doctor's orders. If they believe they can legally do this, they won't likely tell the parents that they're going to stop vaccinating the kids. I wouldn't trust it. The board will do nothing to fight for our kids. We have to fight for them ourselves. There's hardly anyone here, so I am speaking for who did come, and thank you for coming, and for the people watching. Last night on Fox News, Tucker Carlson had Glenn Beck on his show interviewing him, and he told Tucker all about the Great Reset. I think it's worth watching. You should all turn that on. You can pull it up on YouTube. They want us vaccinated for a virus that is 99.9% survivable. That is outrageous. A virus that anyone can look up and find out in public records is patented, and I'm not talking about the vaccine, I'm talking about the virus, was patented, okay? Now, do not be deceived. Mandatory does not mean it's a law. Required is not a law. Ordered is not a law. Ordinance is not a law. Decree is not a law. Recommended or compulsory is not a law. Guidelines are not laws. If the board is afraid of the New York State corporation, they will comply. You do not have to comply. None of you do, ever. That's our right under the Constitution. The corporation is not above the Constitution. Nothing is above the Constitution, not state law, and certainly not the law from the University of the New York State corporation. You cannot mandate an experimental drug, and not one of these are licensed in the United States. They're not. The one that's licensed is not here yet. Have any of you heard of the startling prophecy of America?
Mrs. Covato, your time is up. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next Board of Ed meeting will be February 9th.